Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. We're going to get started with our TPZ meeting for this evening. I will start us off with a roll call of the members. We have Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Robert Canto.
Here.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Yes.
And then our alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
And Kyla Zimmerman.
Here.
Thank you. I will note for the record, we are a five-member voting board this evening. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 11th Town Plan and Zoning Committee meeting, Commission meeting. My name is Scott Halsted. If I'm sitting back, it's not because I don't like these people. I've got a leg injury, so bear with me as I look really uncomfortable up here tonight. We've got a couple of new business items and a couple of public hearings to get to this evening, but I guess we'll start with Liz if you could read the legal notice first, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, March 11th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall chambers, Council chambers, on the following application. Nagaprasana, Nagaranjan, application for a special permit for home business use, commercial kitchen at 8 Circle Drive, R9LG Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation interest in person is at 1 Monteith Drive Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link, a link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. Dated, do I need to read all this? A copy of this proposal is online, the Farmington website, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 22nd day of February 2024, Town Plan and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Liz. All right, we'll jump right into new business. Our first item is Carrier Group Inc., a request for a second 90-day extension.
Correct.
And I assume you're covering that?
Correct, as usual, for any of the extensions, yes, I am. And I had noted in the agenda review, which I'll up onto the screen. So this is the request for the second 90-day extension. This is for the 25-lot R40 cluster subdivision located on Moraya Road, which was approved in May of 2023. The subdivision regulations require the applicant to prepare the final documents and file them within 90 days. Due to an appeal, there was a gap in the timing, which pushed then to November. And November then, we, sorry, in December, the Commission granted the first extension. Since then, the staff has met with the applicant and consultants to review engineering comments and conditions of approval in early January. We received updated plans for review at the end of January and reissued minor comments back to the applicant and consultants in mid-February. Staff is in receipt of updated plans responding to the mid-February comments and is awaiting the final subdivision plans and conservation easements that go with those. And they are expected within the next few weeks. We see no reason why this would not be completed within those next 90 days.
Thanks, Shannon.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, any questions or comments from anybody?
No.
Very straightforward. Okay, can we get a motion in a second, please?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request by Carrier Group Inc. for a second 90-day extension of time to file subdivision Mylar Maps for lots 8517 and 8518, Moraya Road.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, our second new business item is to accept an application for 8774 Scott Swamp LLC. Get a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for a special permit and site plan approval for 8774 Scott Swamp LLC for lot 8774 and 172 Scott Swamp Road. To, for a contractor yard development and associated site improvements in CR Zone and scheduled public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 8, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving right along to our public hearings. Quick, before we get, jump into the one for the Town of Farmington, just a quick primer on how these work for those in the audience, as well as those who may be online. We'll ask the applicant to present to the Commission first. We'll then go through the full Commission and have each member ask questions if they have any. We'll then open it up to folks in the room who want to wish to speak in favor or against the applicant. And then we'll allow the applicant to respond to that. We do ask for public comment. They try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. They're incredibly valuable to us, but just in the sake of everybody's time, the Commission, that is all volunteer, plus the public that's here. We just ask you to try to keep the comments limited to five minutes. And if you feel like you're echoing something that somebody else said, it's okay to say. I echo what they said, or ditto. So with that being said, I'm going to jump right into the first one, which is Town of Farmington, 10 Monteith Drive, application for special permit for renovation of 1928 building in the R40 zone.
Good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Russ Arnold. I am the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer for the Town of Farmington, here tonight to talk about the 1928 renovation project. Couple of years ago, the town approved a $16 million funding authorization for the renovation of the building. Since then, the Building Committee has been working diligently to come up with a set of plans. We will present those tonight for you in conjunction with those plans for the site plan and the building renovation. We're going to talk about a modification to the previously approved high school project based upon the outcome of our design as we've moved forward for the 1928 building. One thing, you want to go to the next one, Shannon?
Got the next, so that was the parking lot.
There you go. I was trying to see what we were, look at the red there. So as part of the high school project, we need to have a early enabling project, which afforded us additional parking that's down, as you all know, in front of the F-Hill along Farmington Avenue. So with that, we're going to move on to the, that's just, this slide is showing that parking lot.
That's going to take a bit my, from my computer to.
I was going to say, I'm blind. That's getting bad.
With the color, with the colored renderings, it just takes a bit.
It's windy out.
And everything's a different.
That's our updated computer system.
Different, well, it's the different scale drawing, so here we go.
Maybe we could put something in capital, Kathy. Update our, update our computer. Okay, so here's our. It's budget week, right? We're ready. So here's our updated site plan for the 1928 building. As you'll see in the red in front of the library, I've had a couple of discussions with Jocelyn Kennedy, our new librarian, about, the original intent was to remove the temporary parking lot fully. And talking with her and based on everything going on with the high school project with Nancy Parent and her having concerts and the Thursday night concerts in the summer, they're stuffed into the front corner along Route 4 with some orange safety fence that stays up for the summer. We, we talked about it, if we kept a portion of it, it would be 22 spaces right there adjacent to the existing library lot. That's where we'd move the concerts, the Thursday night concerts would be held there. Jocelyn would like to have a farmer's market come back and have that stage right there in that location. So we came up with this plan right here to keep those 22 spots in place, but get rid of the majority of the 135 spots, or, so we'd end up with an, we take away 113 spots. And we still have the grass back at the F, on the bottom of the F-Hill. The tennis courts originally were down on the west side, right there where Shannon has the cursor, as part of the proposed high school project. Based on the design of our, the 1928 project and discussion with the high school people and that whole project in the Board of Ed, we thought moving, sliding the tennis courts up behind the 1928 building, that would get them closer to the school for after-school activity and tennis matches and that thing. So instead of having to be on the, basically the schools I wanted in the campus, the tennis court would be at the farther end of campus. Control of it, it would just be very difficult for them to manage. So by sliding it behind the high school and that where Shannon's cursor is right now, those four lot courts right there, those are the ones that are going to be lit as we had before. If you remember, we had the eight tennis courts before. Four were lit and four were not. So those, that's what the proposal is for that. And one thing, we'll block a little bit too from the light. It's behind, it's right at the bottom of the hill. So any light impact from those lights, very minimal compared to where they were before with the adjoining residents. One thing to note, again, can you zoom in a little, Shannon? Or will that take a little too much?
And then.
The parking lot?
The parking, at the top of the 28 building?
Yes, please.
Where the modification is?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
So right where Shannon's cursor is, the original plan had those, that part line of parking stalls we've flip-flopped with the high school project. In discussions with the Board of Ed, they preferred that to have less parking adjac, right adjacent to the 28 building. So if students parked, they would kind of be a differential between Town Hall visitors and the high school visitors. So we basically flipped that row of parking and put it up on the north side of the parking lot. And it kind of works out better. Gives us a little better roadway for the road going up to the upper hill. The fields up on top. And can we move to the next? Oh, one thing, I guess, why we're here. I know, we'll go, we'll keep going. Can you go to the grading plan, please?
Yes. If I can get it. Oh, we'll see, it may have locked up.
And that's the end of the presentation?
Well, it'll catch up to you.
Any questions? Are we good?
It's going to take a, there we go. It's just going to take a minute.
So while we're waiting for that to load, we're proposing to change some of the grading in front of the F-Hill coming down the sledding hill. Right now, as it currently stands, it comes down and has an abrupt angle at the bottom of the hill. We have a quantity of fill that we're looking to get rid of and have a home for, so we can save money on the project, on the high school project. And this is one location that's going to take roughly about 3,000 yards of material. And it's basically, we're going to mimic the hill as it exists today. We're just going to fatten it out and still, still come down, but we'll smooth the curve at the bottom, so you don't have such an abrupt angle. The F is going to remain, nothing's going to change there, but it'll be a smoother sledding hill down to the bottom. And we're going to maintain swale. I don't know, should I ask to zoom in?
I.
Yeah.
They know.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yeah. So that the swale will be run along the, the south edge of the hill.
What's the angle of the ramp for the, for the snowboards?
33 degrees, just what we need. We're going to meet Olympic-style, Olympic requirements. So we're going to maintain at the end of this part where the parking lot is, you can kind of see it's grayed out a little bit. There's an existing swale that was created to take the runoff from that. We're going to maintain that swale to the existing catch basin and storm drain that was installed as part of the temporary parking lot, so that the runoff will still get caught before it gets down to Route 4, travel through the grass-lined swale and into that catch basin before, so it's not a direct discharge. But it's all over, over grass flow. So I think that's the four modifications we needed for the high school portion. If we can go to the next slide. Oh, we're back, we're into the details.
The architectural, so do you want to go back up?
We can, yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's running through the laptop, that's why.
You need a better laptop, budget reasons.
Need Todd and Brian here. There we go.
There we go. Should I ask, or is it?
I'm going to try it gently. You, you keep talking and I'm going to try gently to zoom.
So as Shannon slowly navigates through the plan sheet, as part of the process with the 1928 building, the original scope with the high school project was just to basically be the building itself, the shell of the outline of the 28 building. But during our review of the plans, the cafeteria, cafeteria, whatever you want to call it, back in the day, when my father went to school there, they, it was all part of the 52 build, 1950, 1928 building, the original cafeteria, it was a gymnasium auditorium. And with that, we decided, you know what, that's, we should keep it, it's part of the building. And financially, to take that off would leave a gaping hole in the back and would cost, you know, an absorbent amount of money. So we, we, everyone, the Building Committee said, let's leave it, we'll keep it on. And that'll be, now be a gym space and multi-use, multipurpose room. But it'll be, it'll be somewhere to the gym at West District. It's not going to be a regulation-sized basketball court, but good enough size for, you know, kindergarten, K through 4, K through 3, that age group. So it's a little, as you see, that's the pink shaded area compared to the yellow area that was pretty, was depicted on the high school project. And that is, I'll go through, so I have Chris Nardi's here and his team will talk, I'm going to call Chris up now. He can talk about the drainage, parking lot, the building itself, improvements that we're going to do on the building. Chris Nardi is our architect with Silver Petroselli. And I'll be here as well. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, Christopher Nardi, Principal and Project Architect with Silver Petroselli Associates. I'm going to walk you through our building program and describe our scope of work for the 28 building itself before I turn it over to Tom Swale, who is here representing Alfred Benish and Company, our civil engineering team. And he'll walk you through the site improvements incorporated with the 1928 project.
Shannon, the architecture.
If you could go to the floor plan, please, Shannon. Thank you. So, so in terms of the program of the building, it is essentially moving all of the Town Hall functions from this facility up the hill to the three-story 1928 building. In addition to that, as Russ had mentioned, we have incorporated some recreational space. There are rec offices and then a multipurpose room or gymnasium that Shannon's highlighting there, which would include two basketball hoops, pickleball court and a volleyball court striping, and then a classroom dance studio just below that. The footprint of the building is as it was back in 1928, with the exception of the upper left-hand corner of this plan. So that is a roughly 900-square-foot, single-story addition that will serve as the new entrance to the 1928 building off of our parking lot. There, there really wasn't a dedicated entry, in particular, not a secure entry point into this facility. So through this addition, we've created a secure vestibule, reception lobby area, and then also placing a new elevator there that would provide accessibility to all floors of the building. On the ground floor, we have the primary Town Hall departments that are most often visited by the public, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Tax Assessor, Registrar of Voters. And then the upper floors, which I did not include in this presentation, but it was all part of our submission, include the other Town Hall functions, including Development, IT, Finance Office, and Town Manager's Office, as well as a conference suite and a large training room that would be shared by all departments and potentially outside organizations. If you could go to the elevations. Again, I only included one sheet of elevations, but certainly if there are questions, we can go to the full submission to answer those. Essentially, our approach to the exterior of this building was to restore in kind. So we're restoring the masonry, the stone, the brick, the copings and the parapits. There's limestone and stucco that will be restored. We're replacing all of the windows in kind with similar aluminum-type historic windows. And we're restoring the side exits that come out of the stairs on the east and the west ends. And then there's a section of this building that was built into, or where the 1960s and 1950s additions attached. So when those are removed, there will be much heavier renovations to those areas to bring the building back to its previous form and to make it weather tight. And then we included a few renderings. These are, these were preliminary SD renderings of the new entry vestibule addition, which you can see in the foreground of that photo, the single-story piece, utilizing stone material and aluminum that would match the other characteristics of the 1928 building, again with a secure entry point and airlock vestibule. The 28 building is in the rear, the brick three-story building, obviously. And then working into that design, a new patio and entryway that would be a combination of concrete pavings and pavers. I know it's all depicted as, as brick here, but that has been further developed since these renderings were created. And then lastly, that was just a rendering we had done from the, from the hill coming up Monteith Drive. And really, the, the impact of this image was intended to be, the building looks like it did in 1928, restored, or as it does now if you're approaching from this end of the site. And I'm going to have Tom come up and talk about civil engineering.
Hello, I'm Tom Swale from Benish. And pardon me if I don't talk too much about civil engineering. I'm a registered landscape architect with Benish. But if they have any questions, you know, certainly tempted to answer those. So the existing drive on the south side of the 1928 building is maintained. It was rebuilt. Accessing a new parking lot that accesses the building from the west side. The building is symmetrical off the, the new main entrance. And there's a, the walkway going directly up to that, to the main entrance is, goes straight down the middle of the parking lot. And so the, the, the new vestibule has a new brick paver terrace on the west and north sides, which, you know, allows easy access from the west into the parking lot. We, we have walkways that, that go entirely around the, the building. So easy connection up to the, throughout the site, but also to the, the tennis courts, off to the parking lots, to the northeast. And inside, on the, on the east side, we've, there's a series of utilities are maintained inside the walkway between the building and the walk. And it's heavily planted there to, similar to, as it is now. On the north side, there's a number of plantings up against the building that you know, it's, it's the north side, so it's, it, it's, and it's not a main entrance. It's their only emergency exits on that side. So it's, it's got fairly low-key. In the, back to the, to the terrace, right off the vestibule, there's two flagpoles. And, and then, you know, we had handy parking, it's direct, you know, the first spaces right off that vestibule. That's about it. Any questions?
We'll save those. Pretty young, but thank you.
One thing I'd like to talk about is the drainage that we're doing, that we're proposing through the parking lot. Shannon, can you go to the detail? Isn't there a cut sheet on that?
So we've got the grading plan.
Go to the.
Do you want to go to that grade?
Rating plan will be fine.
I think it shows, a good bit of it shows on here. Again, it's going to take a minute, but we'll get there.
So as you all are aware, we do an extensive plan review in our office and Shannon and Bruce go through everything. We talk a lot about, you know, what we should do, what needs to be done. And part of the MS4, as you're familiar with the DCIA, you want to disconnect your impervious from your impervious. And that's one thing we're accomplishing here. We're going to put in perforated pipe system, stone trench. We have a very good gravel base. It's only about 40 feet deep down to the river. So we're going to utilize that and increase the, so we'll increase our disconnection, their impervious. So we're good, that's going to run, as you can see, Shannon, it's running from north to south. That'll all be disconnected and take on that whole parking lot. We'll go through that system. And it's going to be running about half a percent, so it's going to really force the infiltration and it'd more than carry the, you know, first one inch for the water quality volume. So we had a, quite an extensive conversation in our office about how to handle that and what to do with it. We're going to have a hood on the outlet structure so that we'll catch any debris from going down, you know, downstream to the, towards the river. We'll have, everything will be granite curd. All the grading will be in conjunction with the tennis courts behind us. What was the other thing? So we'll have, in the plaza area, one thing I want to mention, in the late fall, the Building Committee decided to do a brick sale. And they're going to sell bricks for people to buy and it'll be placed within the plaza as you're leading into the, the high school. And those, those funds will go towards the, what was the gentleman's name? Stephen Fliss, Stephen Fliss Scholarship Fund. It'll be one way, another way to help fund that. And we're going to build, do the plaza in such a manner that if we'll sell so many, stop the sale and put the, incorporate those into the patio and within the plaza. And if more, you know, we decide to open up the sale again, we can always cut out a panel and reinstall, put the new bricks in. So it'll be in a checkered pattern. So that'll be what you'll see coming into the, into the plaza. Well, that, we're going to meet all the requirements for green space, obviously. Trees will be planted within the island. We're going to coordinate those with the lighting. Our lighting plan has been submitted and reviewed, scrutin, with, well, it was very scrupulously reviewed. Had a few comments on that. There is a list of comments that Bruce and Shannon created for us. And all those comments are going to be incorporated into our design, final design. They were, we, I can't, what do we have, about two or two and a half, three-hour meeting talking about everything? So, but everything is, we had no problem with it, a lot of very good comments, as usual. So those will all be incorporated into our design. We are planning to go to bid pending approval here in May. And then we'll be working, obviously, in conjunction with the high school project and coordinating our efforts. With those efforts, this summer is going to be a really big push at the high school for opening, getting students and everybody in in August. So we'll be working in conjunction with their, that demo portion of the project, with our project. We've been working with them for a year now, at least. And everything's going well with that. And with that, I, and we'll open up, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate our collaboration with the high school team and some of those gentlemen are here this evening. If there are questions about the whole site that they could speak specifically to, but in addition to working through the logistics, we are utilizing the information that they've provided for the construction of the high school in terms of the selected hole fixtures and bollard fixtures on the campus. So we're incorporating those specific elements into our design package to create a uniform campus setting and appearance for both facilities as part of this project. As part of this project.
That will open up any.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Matt, we'll start with you. Any questions?
Uh it looks great. The only question I have is about the lighting. Is uh the front of the building gonna have floodlights that we could see from the road?
Gonna have the, right now, we're proposing to have the wall packs that are on there just replaced.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Bobby? Um again, great presentation. What's the anticipated completion time? I know it's early.
If I had my druthers, no, uh we're probably about a year and a half out.
Year and a half.
From once we go to May. So we're probably looking realistically, probably uh September of twenty six. Would probably be the move in date. Hopefully sooner, but we don't want to cut it too tightly.
Right, right, right.
What did I say? Twenty six? My math was uh twenty five, sorry.
Sounds better than that.
Twenty five, yeah.
Sounds much better.
Liz?
Uh yeah, thanks for, thanks for great presentation. Um. Now, you mentioned the tennis court drainage and the and the parking lot drainage. There are they, they're on the same system?
They are separate. They're separate till they get to the direct to the parking lot.
Okay.
Yep, so everything will be coming through that parking lot storm system.
Okay, and yeah, I read about the changing the angle, the the pitch and everything.
Correct.
Um one other question is parents of former students who are on the track team. Is the javelin field gonna go back?
No, javelin's up top now.
It is?
So the javelin, shot put and discus, everything got moved up to the upper field. It's in uh right behind the press box.
Oh, okay.
It's right there.
And my kids graduated a while ago.
Yeah.
So, but I was just wondering, guys, remember?
It it would be available if needed, uh but we put up a brand new facility. We added that to the project. Uh for last spring or last fall. And spring and fall, I'm sorry, I'm like, I'm getting all messed up on timelines. Uh but no, everything, instead of just being out there and taped and it's everything has its own home right now. So.
Oh, that's that's wonderful.
Yeah, it's a permanent place.
Okay, a home. Everyone is at home. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave?
Um yeah, uh I echo everybody else. A great presentation.
Thank you.
Um question about the tennis courts. I think, did you say half of them were lit?
Yes.
You know, that that's gonna stay?
We're gonna maintain exactly what we had before, yeah.
The reasoning behind that?
Uh continuity and cost, to be perfectly honest with you. And then then frankly, at night, uh even where they were in the old location. At night, maybe you'd get four courts being used, but it's legitimately two or three courts at most at night. When and while you need the lights on, everyone tend to tends to come after school, dinner time, and usually clearing up around eight. And then when the lights come on, there's only a couple, three courts being used. I have, I've been up here, I I live right over here, so we walk frequently and. Very and and frequently is there four courts being used at night when with the lights.
And with the change in keeping the other half of the building, um is like, is there a huge cost difference? Is there a huge cost savings?
For the lighting?
No, for the, I'm talking about the building now. So you're keeping that other half of the building that originally you were going to take off?
Oh, yeah, so the cost savings to keep it is far less than than taking it off. The estimate to redo that wall is around a million dollars. So. Cleaning brick and doing some grouting on the and pointing is a lot cheaper than having to rebuild that whole wall. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bruce? Um I too echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners that there's a lot of work has gone into that. It shows there were an awful lot of documents to review and. Uh great job. I I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation as well. Um I don't have additional questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
So also very appreciative of the presentation and all the fun and what everybody else said. I do have a couple of questions. Um parking always pops into my head with this project and it has it as other iterations of it have come through. I think one of the one of the strengths of this plan is we've got a lot going on in a relatively small block. It keeps a lot of town and school activities in a very small area, right?
Does.
Um but that means there's gotta be a lot of parking for all those things. So are we confident that? You know, when there's a baseball game and the tennis courts and there's just a lot of activity. Are the is the, I guess I don't have the question fully formed yet, but. Are we gonna permit certain areas for certain types of parking? Is it all gonna be general parking? Have we not gotten there yet? Am I jumping ahead?
We've had some preliminary discussions. Scott Hurwitz and myself have talked and Sam Kilpatrick have talked about it. At this point, our thought. Uh going forward, with the parking on the west side, that's intended for town hall. Obviously, people are gonna come up, pull up and park where they want to.
Yep.
Um the best, if I can, the back parking lot, like the outfield where the outfield was on the baseball field.
Yep.
On the northeast corner, that is teacher parking. Uh as you come to the front of the school where the drop off is and the buses.
Mm hmm.
That there's parking along the outside ring of the bus drop off. That'll be for the early morning staff and faculty. Uh then you'll have a temporary uh. Drop off and parking right there in front for visitors. And then in the main lot, come right through where Shannon's cursor is now, that's gonna be intended for the majority of the students. And then heading up the nine hundred wing, that'll be for students as well. And then we're trying, we're trying to keep the parking along the converted parking that wouldn't be geared to more towards the town hall. Um at this point, we're holding off on saying, okay, this is a designated parking spot for town hall and this is designated for high school. Where it's kind of like, let's wait and see how it filters out. And if we have to do that, we definitely will, just to kind of keep a separation. Um but I think the majority of the people uh are gonna park for the town hall will, once they figure it all out, like, listen. It's brand new, right? People are gonna be looking, where do I gotta go? We'll have town hall parking signs across as you come up to cross in front of the high school. Or the twenty eight building. Um and it'll be, if I think it'll iron itself out, but we're absolutely open to having a sign if we have to.
I appreciate that. I guess just a comment, the area that concerns me the most parking wise is down. Towards the nineteen twenty eight building and the fields and all of that, because there's not as much parking down in that territory. So.
Right.
No, nothing more than a comment, just.
No, no, I under I understand.
That that's an area that draws a little bit of concern. Um my other question, non-parking related, was around the vestibule. What's access gonna be like into this new building? And because I know obviously the the court's gonna get used all sorts of hours, evenings, weekends and such, and town hall is not. Is it gonna be controlled?
Access to the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be, it'll be locked, just like it is now.
Okay.
Uh the police lock the building up here at night. Uh but up there, it'll be, everything will be electronic and at four thirty, basically, the doors will lock unless there's a meeting or something scheduled, just as we do now. The same procedures are gonna hold true as they do here as it will up there. Um the one thing that's a lot better, it's only one point of access, just like we have here. Before, when we had the two lower doors and we locked those for security. The two side entrances with the two new porticos that are gonna replicate replicate what we had, well, what the town had back way before I was here. Um those are gonna be exit only doors. So when you come out those side stairs, you're gonna go down and just as an exit only, they're we're not allowing any entrance in there. Um you'll have acts and it'll be a gated access into the elevator to the elevator. Uh into the hallway, the elevator will be available. That will get shut off at night. On the weekends when recreation isn't coming in and doing their thing on Saturdays or even Sundays, whatever the schedule is. Everything gets locked except for access to the bathrooms and the gym and the dance area. So that's the good thing is you can shut everything off, but once you're like here at this, when you're in this building, once you come in, you're in. And you gotta get, you can get anywhere in a building, except you can't get into the the offices. Up there, you won't get, the only place you can go is the bathrooms and the gym. So that's a very big positive for it.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. Kyle, I'm sorry I left you out of the questions. Did you have any questions for for the applicant?
Oh, no, no questions.
All right, sorry about that, Kyle. Thanks so much, Russ. We're gonna turn it over to the public, I think, at this point. If there's anybody. Um in the audience that wishes to comment on the application either for or against. Please come up to the podium.
Nothing. It's a short answer. Um what will happen is it's gonna remain as is. This will still be the council chambers for meetings. Um the food bank is gonna come in. They're in a small little office across the street at the Staples House. They're gonna, they're gonna come over and get an occupy a space. Nothing's been determined as to where yet. Social services will move over here from the Staples House, which will allow greater access. Uh Nancy has a lot of visitors every day. Uh so that'll, they'll come over here. Uh the probate clerk will stay here. They're right here, but they're gonna be able to expand, uh being that we're with Burlington as well. So uh storage and one thing I've said at a, I think it was a council meeting at one time. Um we don't say too much about what we need, you know, we present in our budget and stuff, but storage, I have to tell you, after thirty years. We're busting at the seams and we're required, as the building department, planning department, uh we're required to keep full paper copies of everything that comes in. Um for any pro any commercial building. So if you think about all the commercial buildings that we've had and continue to grow, which is a good thing. Uh we have to keep those paper copies. So we're stored down at the treatment plant. We're stored here in the town hall. Um we are event, we just got approval to scan everything and it start, the state is starting to turn to a scanning electronic copy. Um but that takes time and money as well. So a lot of this will be used as storage too. It does. More more reasons than one. Uh but no, it's it's just we're for a capacity down there and that was um. Two thousand and eighteen, we completed that. So it's and again, I'm not complaining. It's just a matter of fact, it is what it is, but we just, we need the storage space. So that's what a lot of this will be utilized for as well. You're welcome.
Anybody else that's in the room that wishes to comment for or against? Shannon?
Okay. If uh if anyone has called in on Zoom to offer comment on the application for the town of Farmington at ten Monteith. Drive for the nineteen twenty eight building, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in for the public hearing for ten Monteith Drive for the nineteen twenty eight building, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mister Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from a commissioner at this point? Everybody good? And close the hearing? Okay.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, we're done. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can we get a motion, please?
Uh okay, uh yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application. By the town of Farmington, ten Monteith Drive for a special permit for renovation of the nineteen twenty eight building in the R forty zone.
Awesome. Thank you, Bobby. Any discussion? Everybody's good? Know what we're voting on?
Mm hmm.
Got all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll let the gallery clear here for a second, right?
Exactly.
But I can't get over there to do it.
I'm sorry.
Just let me.
Is it? They'll work their way out.
All right, our second public hearing of the evening, Naga Pasana. I I'm sorry if I'm, I'm sure I mispronounced your name from Eight Circle Drive.
That's not.
All apologies.
Right, please.
If you're gonna step up to the podium, please and. Walk us through your application.
Sure, uh good evening, everyone. And um uh this is uh a request to uh. The special permit for building a commercial grade kitchen in uh my home. And um I would like to explain a bit uh and the background about what we are planning to do and so that we you can, we. We can check, uh we can address any issues or any concerns accordingly. Um uh. Uh my wife and myself are married for fifteen years and she has, she had been a housewife all all years. And uh now my uh kid in the fifteen, uh he's ready to start the college in couple of years. So uh we are trying to find. We are fi- finding a void in our life uh since we uh centered our life around him. Uh so we are trying to fill in something. So at the time when we discussed um uh to do something interesting uh that we could do. Um my wife uh wanted to start a business uh to do a cooking business uh and deliver the meal. Um and um when we did the paperwork, uh we thought it would be good uh if we cook in the home and if she delivers in that way. Uh she she can uh live the life and doesn't want to chase the R O A of the business and uh. There is no need for her to run in the rate rat race. At the same time, she can uh use her time useful and uh cover the void. So. Um uh that's where uh we researched and we found that there's an option uh to build a additional kitchen in the home. And spoke with the public department and they said uh if zoning is approved and uh if uh their side of uh concerns are addressed, we could start a business. And uh we are not planning to scale up this business and run in the full mode. We are, we are just, as I said earlier, we are just trying to find, fill in the void. Uh and at the same time, I do something uh useful and and uh make use of our time. And um uh I I on on that line, um we are not uh even um um planning to uh provide a full fledged menu or something. Uh it would be just a menu decided by my wife and I, if somebody's interested, uh uh they might call. And if they, if they like the food that is made on that day, we are planning to deliver it. Uh that's all it is. Uh about and uh regarding the uh the uh. Business and operation logistics, we are planning to procure everything um by ourselves, like my wife will be doing it ourselves, since. I'm not taking any credit. I'm not going to do most of the work. Uh I'm working full time for one of the Fortune ten company and uh I'm doing uh the I T job. So. Uh I I will not be able to uh help her during the workday. So uh she will be uh procuring it and uh she'll be cooking it and she'll be delivering it. Uh so and uh she would be doing that in the uh timeline of uh uh eight A M uh to five P M. And and that's what um we are planning to do. So at any point of time, she could either cook or deliver or procure. So. So uh uh naturally, uh with our business plan, uh it's capped with the minimal supply. And also, uh we are not planning to disrupt uh our neighborhood. There will not be any delivery. Uh our pickup the that will be entertained from from the facility. And also I don't want my address to be uh passed across uh uh. Uh and as well as uh for uh picking up the orders and uh choosing the customer, uh even that. We are only planning to uh pick up the orders through reference, like we are not planning to do any uh full fledged business. So if if. If if we get a call and uh only if you feel confident, my wife will be stopping by to uh deliver it. Uh and uh we are not taking any risk and and certainly I'm not uh taking any risk uh by. Uh taking a full fledged business uh also. And uh we did discuss about uh buying a small restaurant and running it. Uh as I said, uh she she wanted uh to spend her time useful. Uh if we do that. Uh she will be uh in a position to uh pay the rent, uh utility bills, et cetera. Now, all these things are on me and 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 all she would do is uh she'd cook what she want and and deliver it. Uh and uh we are open uh for any concerns or anything uh we need to address. Uh. Uh uh it it's not the must thing to do. It it would be, it is just a nice thing to do. If we if we if we get all cleared, uh we would do and operate. Uh and if it if not, maybe we will find something else. And it's 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 definitely not the bread uh that's going to be affected for my family. And and uh the the uh one last thing is, uh if if um uh. This business gets approved, uh I'd be happy for my wife. And and if this gets rejected, even then I'm happy for me because I get all my wife's attention. So.
Thank you. Awesome.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Matt, any questions?
All right, um.
Let's talk about getting food to the house.
Yep.
Um. What is the delivery schedule going to look like? I've seen your responses. Just want to ask this. Um. Are you planning on bringing in trucks? Are you just going to get?
No, we, we are planning to use, uh, the car that we have, uh, that we already have. Uh, she'll be delivering in the car. And, uh, I have listed, uh, uh, we might do seven deliveries a day. The reason behind it is, uh, we do use the car for the personal things and, and. Uh, on average, uh, today we are, we are opening our garage four times a day at least. So I did not want it to give the low count and, and somebody complaining that they are going out for six or seven times. So. Like considering my personal use and, and the business use, I listed seven deliveries a day. But, uh, theoretically it is not possible, like, uh, she procure, procuring the things from the grocery store. And, um, cooking and then running for the delivery, uh.
She's going to be doing everything.
Yeah, yeah, she's going to. We are not go, planning to employ any, uh, anyone. And, uh, I'm working full-time, so I would not be able to, uh, help her during the workday. Uh. And I love my job as well, so.
So in, inside the actual. Kitchen, can you walk me through your plan there?
Uh, actually I just presented the rough plan. We didn't put in any money, uh, to hire anyone, um, professionally, like I, I just did the. Drawing myself where we think, uh, where it could be. Uh, I think when speaking with the, uh, health department, they said. Uh, I would need a three, uh, sink, uh, for the, uh, kitchen. And, uh, the, uh, the other thing they said was, uh, they wanted a grease trap, uh, for the kitchen. And, and we'll be doing whatever, uh, the health department needs. Uh, say if, uh, we live in the other states like, uh, Oklahoma or somewhere, we might not even. Need to build this kitchen for this purpose. She, she might just cook in the, uh, personal kitchen and, and sell it. But, uh, since. Uh, the health department in our state needs, uh, the things we are planning to build the kitchen and, and do whatever, uh, uh, is needed to bring it up to the code. Like we, we are just doing it for the code, uh, else for, for this purpose, she, she definitely can cook what we are cooking in the home and, and, uh, do it.
Um, is this a commercial grade stove top or are you just going to use your existing?
Uh, as I said, like, uh, I, I do not have any plans as of now, whatever health department needs me to do, like, uh, if health department says. I would need the commercial grade, uh, stove, then I will need to install a commercial grade stove. Uh.
Okay, that's all I have.
Like, I, I did not, um, uh, invest a ton of money for, for the initial proposal because I am not sure we are doing it or not. So. Uh, I, I did all my work, uh, so, uh, like if, if, uh, zoning looks okay. And, uh, I'll need to talk to the health department to see what they need and then I'll need to start working on the project to, it, like it.
Thanks, Matt. Bobby.
All right, um, so just for some clarification. So you had mentioned earlier, so it's going to be delivery only. So you're not going to have people coming to the house to pick up meals?
No, definitely. We do not entertain. We'll not be entertaining the pickup in the home.
Okay, so it's, um, and then you also said it's going to be a daily menu. So it's basically she's going to cook food for that day and that's it?
Yeah, that's it. Yes.
Okay, so it's not going to be a standard menu where people can?
No, nothing. Yep, yeah, she's, yeah, we have listed the items, but in that item, it like, uh, on that day, it might vary on her mood.
Um, and how many meals is she planning on preparing per day?
Uh, as of now, we, we do not estimate much, like maybe we, we might cater a couple of families. Or if there is any, uh, a special order for a party or something, she might cook for the party. They're like, that, that is the plan, only plan.
So less than ten, ten to fifteen, one to five?
Well, uh, it, it's very hard to estimate, uh, for how many, how many meals she might cook. Uh, because it, it, it depends on the, like, someday we might not even switch on the stove. If, if nobody orders, like, uh, it would be, uh. Just half day for her.
Okay, um, so I'm assuming with the limited, uh. Meals that you're cooking, there's going to be no extra trash. There's going to be no need for additional trash services at the house?
Yep, that's what we are estimating. What we are estimating is, uh, uh, she's one lead person, whatever she can cook. On that day, that, that is the only, uh, thing, my, my, the maximum I would estimate, maybe she can cook for, uh, twenty, twenty-five, uh, at one day, uh.
That's like if it's a party, she'll cook.
Yeah, 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 like.
Um, and she would be delivering that too. That's like a catering service. She wouldn't have people picking it up?
No, she will not. Yeah, she will be, uh, uh, delivering it. If it's Saturday or Sunday, I might deliver it for her, but.
Right, right, right. Okay. And then, um, that being said, there's going to be no employees there?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we are sure we will not be employing anyone because we, uh, I don't know. It seems very expensive.
Right, right, right. Okay. Um, and is this going to be a lunch service or a dinner service or both?
Uh, it, it's going to be a brunch and, and dinner, uh, uh, like, oh. It, it, it like, uh, it's, I would not even call as a service. If somebody asks for the items, she will be preparing it and delivering it. That's it. Uh, uh, whatever she makes for our home will be the menu.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, thanks, Bobby. Wes?
Um, Shannon, my, I was having a little difficulty with the GIS. Could you pull up?
Absolutely.
Thank you. My computer just wasn't accepting it because I'm just curious to see the neighborhood.
Talking about. Mine's been so well behaved this evening.
Well.
Yeah, so.
I, that's the other thing.
So I'm going to drive us in just from an orientation standpoint. So this is Plainville, Plainville Avenue, one seventy-seven.
Okay.
And then this is the Lake Garda neighborhood to the, to the left.
Okay.
Um, so you, in order to access the property, you come up Plainville Avenue or down north or south on Plainville Avenue. Uh, to Sunset Drive to Circle Drive.
Okay.
And then, um, the property in question is here is eight. Um, and then you can see the proximity to the.
Okay, it looks like a fairly dense, houses are close together. I haven't been in.
Right, yep, it's a smaller, correct.
Okay, now was, uh, was your idea to? Build this kitchen within your existing home?
Yep, yes.
Okay, not any addition or garage or anything like that?
Uh, uh, what we are planning, uh, as of now, uh, in the paper, uh, what we, we, uh, I proposed was, uh, to convert the, uh, kitchen, uh. As the garage as the kitchen and build a new garage. If it's going to take a toll and if it's going to be more. Uh, we might just build a kitchen behind the home, uh, uh, attached to the existing home. Um, so that she can access easily, uh, without any issues and build the kitchen there if, if that will be cost effective like. Uh, um, like, uh, she wants a kitchen, I want to minimize the expense. So whatever, uh, is, is the cheaper option, we will be taking it and. Uh, we definitely will, uh, uh, work with you guys for the code, like whatever, uh, is the code needed.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering if there's going to be a new outbuilding or any?
No, no, we are not planning for any new. I did see about that. Uh, I, I did saw, uh, I, I, I remember reading somewhere that. Uh, we cannot add, uh, the outbuilding, uh, and make it as a kitchen or something. Uh, if, if we are building something, it will be attached to our existing home.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yeah, even in today's, as of today, uh, uh, I proposed to, uh, convert the garage to the commercial kitchen. In that way, uh. Uh, it's not much expensive. I just need to remove the garage door and build a wall and, and, uh, something. So it. It, it sounded cheaper. I don't know if, even we work, if it, if it doesn't, then we might add, uh. A kitchen behind the home, existing kitchen. So we will have a bigger kitchen and.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, I'm just seeing the question about the website. How are people, how do people hear about this?
Yeah, we are planning to start a small WhatsApp group and, uh, add our friends into it. And, uh, we'd be catering to friends. So obviously, uh, we'll, we are, uh, planning to, uh, take the referral from the friends and if somebody adds into the group. She'll be, uh, proposing the menu through the WhatsApp group. And if somebody likes that menu for the day, they might or, or, or else they might not.
That's all I have.
Sure, thank you. First?
Um, Mister Nagarajan, I, um. I had the good fortune to spend a, a lot of time in India during my career of the past twenty years in Tamil Nadu and Chennai. So I'm, I'm very familiar.
Sure.
With Indian food and eating a lot of dosas and things like that. And, um, one of the, uh, uh, things that. Uh, I think of, you know, as you're making your presentation is, uh, ventilation.
So.
Uh, and, uh, the kind of food that you're cooking, uh, you know, doses, things like that, that need, need a large area and you're doing a higher volume of this. Most residential kitchens haven't got the CFM and their fans and the, the ability to do that. Um, and I think even if you upgrade to a commercial kitchen, I, I think you would need at least, you know, four hundred, uh, CFM or greater.
Sure.
Uh, in order to disperse the, uh, uh, cooking fumes and, and odors in, in this. And I, I guess. You're saying you're still open to, to doing that?
Yep.
I would urge you to, um, whatever requirements are given to you to over-engineer that. So if you are going to try and, uh. Uh, do things in such a way as to, you know, not have that in that tight area where you are with all these other houses. You, you need very strong. Uh, ventilation. So.
Yeah, definitely. I, I, I do understand, uh, the fumes, uh, issue. I'm just trying to, uh, research to see what I could do, uh, to minimize, uh. The fumes, uh, and, uh, like, uh, if, uh, increasing the CFM, uh, would help or if there is any other option that is available. Uh, 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 the, the order, uh, might be different to the neighbors, uh, because, uh, they are not used to the, uh, South Indian kind of, uh, food. Uh, even though it's, it smells aromatic to me, I, I do understand that it might be annoyance to, to my neighbors, uh, like. I don't eat, uh, non-vegetarian, but, uh, when they do barbecue, stuff like that, uh, I do feel the pain. So, uh, I, I do understand, uh. Uh, what it is, uh, you're talking about. I'll, I definitely try to, uh, mitigate and what we could do, uh, to mitigate. And, and, uh, if we had the concern or something, then, uh, we'll, we'll try to, uh, do if there's any other way to, uh, address, uh, the solution. And also I'm open to like, not doing the business as well. So like, it's, it's not that must do. Uh, it's not going to affect anything. It's, it's just a night, it's nice to have, which are for my wife and she would be happy and I would get the happiness and enjoyment progress and so.
Understood. I guess, I guess, uh, because you haven't really specked out, uh, your commercial kitchen yet, you know, what equipment you're going to have and how you, how you're going to deal with it. It's, it's hard for anybody to judge, uh, you know, whether you'll be able to, uh, you know, meet your, um. You know, requirements in terms of, you know, uh, uh, not to create, uh, you know, disturbance in the neighborhood from noise, vibration.
Sure.
Things, things like that.
Yeah, definitely.
Really assess that until you've identified your equipment and griddles and things like that relative to the food you, you want to do, I think.
Yeah, my, my practical next step would be going to the architect, uh, and, uh, working on the design. And, and definitely at that phase, uh, uh, I would, uh, be doing more analysis and try to speak to experts to see what, what we could do, uh, to minimize the impact.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Yep, yeah, Mike.
So, um, I had a question about your logistic planning. Are you planning on getting the food for the entire week at the grocery store? Is this going to be, uh? Oh, I'm going to cook this day, go to the grocery store, pick up those ingredients?
Uh, he usually, uh, shops, uh, twice a week, um, and, uh, she specifically, uh, shops at Aldi and, uh, a couple of stores. And, and, and we are planning to continue the same. Um, uh, one thing with my wife is, uh, if there's no cilantro. Even, uh, to cook on that day, she will not go consume me. She, she does go to, uh, the grocery store and buy the cilantro and complete the dish. But, uh. Uh, but, uh, we do, uh, shop couple of, uh, days a week and we continue to plan the same.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Kyla, any questions?
Uh, everything I was thinking to ask has been addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyla. I guess just one, one question for me is, um, no changes to the outside of the house or no signage, none of those kinds of things?
No, we are not planning. As I said, uh, our, uh, marketing would be to open a WhatsApp group.
Yeah.
And add our friends to it and take up the order because my wife goes to deliver it. I, uh, I really feel insecure to take the order from, uh, unknown, uh, like. Like I said, uh, we're not targeting for the ROI. We are just, uh, trying to do something, maybe a couple of years or three years. Once my wife feels confident, we might go out building and buy some restaurant or something, but. Definitely I do not see anything happening right now. It's, it's like, after fifteen years of managing home, it would be difficult for, to run a, uh, kitchen outside, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Um, it is a public hearing, so we'll. Open it up to the public at this point. If there's anybody in the room that would like to. Please, please up to the podium, please.
Just one, if, if you folks can go visit the site, pictures don't justify seeing.
Excuse, excuse me, please. We need your name. We need your, if, for, to offer public comment, we need your name and your.
I rather not give it right now. I just.
Then, no, then that's part of providing public comment to the public hearing.
All right, no problem.
That's fine. Thank you.
Step up, please.
Evening commissioners, uh, my name is Roland Seer. I live at Five Pine Drive. Uh, I personally don't have any objection to the proposal. I would be a little bit concerned about, um, fire suppression. If you're going to have a commercial kitchen. And also about the ventilation, um, just because I know the density of that neighborhood and I know how aromatic your food is. Um, so I would suggest like, I'm almost active. Uh, charcoal filtration in addition to high CFM. Um, just because there's houses very close by and yet they might not. Necessarily like all the aromas. Um, I'm actually here as a proxy for my next door neighbor. Um, I have an elderly neighbor, uh, who is objecting to it. Um, I don't have, like I said, I don't have an objection per se, other than those concerns. She does. Um, so I'm going to redo her letter. I, I have a copy of it. If you want to enter it into the record, if you need a, a paper copy of it.
Yes, please. I'll take it when you're finished.
Okay. Uh, her name is Virginia Novak. Um, she wrote this a couple of days ago. I typed it up for her. She signed it. Uh, to whom it may, to whom it may concern. My name is Virginia Novak and I live at Three Pine Drive in the Lake Garda area of Unionville. I spend a great deal of time on my back deck, which directly overlooks the home at Eight Circle Drive in Lake Garda. I moved to this home when I retired at age seventy-seven and I am now ninety-nine years old. Uh, the peace and quiet and clean air are so pure at times that I don't need my oxygen, which I use twenty-four seven for my COPD. I also have breast cancer with other disabilities. Having a commercial enterprise in such a dense residential area will open the door for more commercialization in a town that brags about its clean environment. I question whether this will always be a delivery service for there is extremely limited parking on these narrow streets. Likewise, would we see an increase in the number and frequency of delivery trucks arriving to drop off supplies? Where would they park? There are also several school bus stops on that stretch of Circle Drive. In summation, I am emphatically against this proposed home business and I hope that they will find room for their enterprise in a commercial part of town. Sincerely, Virginia Novak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Hi, James, seventy-three, Lake Garda Drive. Um. Good luck to you. Um. Are there any other home-based, uh, businesses like this in that area? Do you guys know of?
Yeah. Um.
Okay, any, any type of biz, cooking or any type of business?
So there are other, in other areas of Farmington, whether there are in Lake Garda, I do not know. And I'd have to check the database.
Okay, so what is a nine? R nine LG zone?
That's the Lake Garda residential nine, Lake Garda zone.
Okay, so now if he's going to be going for a special permit, this is just going to be in his little plot there?
Correct, the special permit of. Correct. The special permit uh, specific to the request that was made this evening, specific to the property. Only that property. Only for that individual, only under the parameters that were discussed this evening and any conditions that the condition, the commission puts on it.
Has anybody talked with LGIA?
Here with LGI.
Okay.
On the board of the trip.
I've had contact with the president. The president came in and had conversation with myself specifically. I'm the town planner. And I forwarded to the president all of the documentation that we had on file, including the agenda, the agenda review, the application and the comment response email that I exchanged with the applicant prior to the meeting. All of that was transmitted via email, the email that the president gave to me on Friday, I believe Friday, it was Thursday or Friday of last week.
Okay. Well, my concern is like uh, the trash, like somebody had brought up, I think it was Robert. Um. I don't know how you're not gonna have not a lot of trash.
Sir, I'm gonna ask that your, your questions and comments really do need to be addressed for the commission?
Okay.
Nope, and then, no, that's fine. And then um, the applicant will have an opportunity to address any of your questions and comments specifically after we hear all the public comment. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So the trash is a big concern of mine. Is he gonna have a dumpster? Is he gonna have four of the big cans hanging out the end of his driveway? That uh, you can't even pass two cars over there when you drive by, two cars. Plus, it's very densely populated as you can see. So as far as the health department, this drawing here is a thirty-second of what he requires in that commercial kitchen. Would he have to have uh, black welded steel for the, for the stove, ancil system for fire protection? And the grease trap, they're saying that he only needs a three bay sink, grease trap. Do we have septic? Do we have sewer up there? Anybody know?
I do. There's sewer system up there. It's.
There is?
Yes.
Okay, well water over there?
Uh, well, I would have to check. I don't know offhand.
Yeah.
The applicant, I'm sure knows whether or not he's on well water and he can address that. And the commercial kitchen requirements for a home business are different than they are for a commercial kitchen for a restaurant serving.
Well, how, how can that be?
It is because of the nature of it and Farm, and I can't speak to all the differences.
Uh huh.
But Farmington Valley Health is already aware of the, this potential application. And as part of the building permit process, the building permits are not issued until Farmington Valley Health has signed off and approved the interior layout and all the fixtures and items to be included in the kitchen.
Okay.
It doesn't even reach our building official until Farmington Valley has approved. So it's a thorough review with Farmington Valley.
Thank you. Just one other thing I'd like to say is uh, I think he's being a little selfish. Oh, my wife can work from home, yada, yada, this and that. I would love if this thing goes through, I am gonna put something in to put a hot dog stand in my house at seventy-three Lake Garda Drive. Thank you.
Agree with the ninety-nine year old.
Anyone else in the room? Shannon, anybody online?
Uh, I'll ask if anyone has called in to offer comment on the application for eight Circle Drive for home business for commercial kitchen, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone else has called in to offer comment to the commission regarding the public hearing for eight Circle Drive for home business for commercial kitchen, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Mister Chair, there are no hands raised.
Shannon, appreciate that. Would you like to respond as the applicant to any of the, the comments that you heard?
Um. Um, I'm just a ten year into this country and I'm grateful uh, to the place and I'm grateful to the uh, town uh, that provided uh, everything that I needed. And uh, definitely we are not uh, starting this uh, to cause trouble. I'm sorry it sounded uh, selfish, but um, uh, I'm just trying to uh, uh, find my wife's aspiration uh, and balance with the uh, community's interests. Um, uh, but uh, regarding uh, the fumes, that is the only thing that uh, I do not know uh, of the solution. I know uh, we could uh, put in the exhaust with the uh, high power uh, CFM. And uh, I definitely uh, take up the advice for uh, the carbon filter uh, to be installed in it. We, I, I'm definitely open uh, uh, to the concerns and addressing the uh, needs for it. And uh, I, 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 I would assure that uh, once, if, if in case, if this case gets, uh, gets approved and we start doing the business, might be in a couple of times, nobody will know and I think might be uh, uh, because it's, it's going to be a business issue. Usually, even if you guys are not approving it, my wife is going to cook in the home and she's going to uh, uh, fry or make dosas or release. Uh, she, she, she would be definitely doing it. And, and at the same time, uh, if I don't like the barbecue, like I cannot come out and, and, and and complain to the town that I'm vegetarian, I don't eat meat. So somebody's uh, uh, doing a barbecue inside the facility. So I, I couldn't do uh, that as well. And uh, definitely I would love to uh, live in the harmony with the uh, community. And, and we are open, uh, we are hearing. Uh, uh, even if you guys approve, it doesn't mean that we are going to start the business. Uh, uh, we put the community's interest uh, first. Uh, we did not expect the backlash. Uh, but we do uh, sense some kind of dissatisfaction. Uh, we are definitely hearing and, and open for any uh, opinion or suggestion. Uh, and we are definitely open to accommodate uh, any request that comes in and we definitely want to do the business with the code.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any, anybody else, Commissioners, have questions for the applicant at this point?
Yeah.
Good, close the public hearing. We're okay with that? I'm gonna close the public hearing at this point. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Uh, like I make a motion to approve the application for Nagarprasanna Nag, Nagarajan of Eight Circle Drive for a special permit for home business use of a commercial kitchen in an R nine LG zone.
Second. Thank you. All right, let's get some sense of where everybody's at with this one. Matt, where are you, where are you at with this?
I think we recently within the last month had a very similar application.
Correct.
Where the only thing different was the food.
Correct.
So I don't see what, what the difference is here. Um, you know, everyone has their own taste. That's why, that's why there's menus. So, yeah, I'm, I'm on board here.
We're thinking identical. Yeah, yeah, I was thinking the same exact thing. The only thing I might caveat because it is a tight neighborhood. My brother lives in that neighborhood. I know it very, very well. Is that we put in the restriction of no pickups, that it is only a delivery service in case this thing explodes and it decides to grow bigger, that we don't have to worry about that in the future. But other than that, I'm like, Matt, I mean, this is a mirror image of what we just saw.
Thanks, Bobby. Please.
Uh, along the same thoughts and yeah, that, that's, that there is a tight neighborhood and you know, those sort of caveats or, or conditions uh, about a, a delivery based only business, I think is a, is a very reasonable um, requirement that we could add in.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just looking at, and Bruce here had brought it up, uh, about the process creating noise, vibration and that. So that's my only concern is, you know, what do we do if uh, if uh, the ventilation system is going to be excessively loud? That's my, it's be my only concern. Otherwise, I agree with what else. Is there something we put in there? It's already in there in the requirements.
System for the last one? No.
No, and I don't know, I don't, again, because it's a home business as opposed to a, a restaurant, standalone restaurant with patrons coming in and employees coming in, it is managed differently than than a traditional restaurant from Farmington Valley Health. So um, but you can't, I mean, there's a noise, there's a noise ordinance and certainly if it's, if it's a new system and it's operating properly, I would think that it's again, not, it, it doesn't have a noise level like, you know, the bearing loose or something to that effect. Um, but there is, you know, it, it, it will need to adhere to our residential noise and it's a residence adjacent to a residence. So it's no different than air conditioners kicking in and you, we can have a statement that it's not any noise, you know, any louder than, I don't know what an appropriate um, noise level, decibel level would be, but it was something to the effect that it's no louder than a standard air conditioner
Mm-hmm.
from an operation. If it's going to have to be operating on a regular basis, it's different than the lawnmower that runs for just an hour, right? Or in, in these neighborhoods, it's probably they're smaller lots, it's probably less than an hour that those lawn mowers and things are running. So um, I think that would be reasonable that it's no louder than the air conditioners. And we can check decibel ratings then when they come in.
That's, that'd be my only concern otherwise, I agree.
So are those two conditions everybody's okay with adding?
I think those are fair.
You want to try to amend your?
Uh, okay, let me think about that.
We're still in discussion.
I made the motion. Now we're discussing.
Second.
Right, yeah, we're going through all discussions. We might, do we wanna?
Well, it's, everybody seemed on board with.
Okay. We haven't gotten to Mike or Kyla, so that's why I was.
They don't.
We wanna wait. Oh.
They don't get to.
Yeah.
I wasn't giving them back this time.
No, no, exclusion.
Scott, you're right.
No purpose, not purposely excluding them.
I'll totally space it on that point. That's right.
That's okay.
So.
No, sir, the public hearing's closed. I'm sorry, there's no more comment. Yes, sir. He closed it at eight, eight thirty PM. He closed the hearing.
Yeah, yep.
So how would you, how would you word that condition?
Yeah, you, with your parking.
That will help.
So I would make the motion to approve it being a delivery only service with no pickup at the house. And.
No, no onsite pickup.
No onsite pickup.
Okay.
And to adhere to all um, noise pollution policies.
Residential noise ordinances. Okay, don't.
And that after his days. Right, condition.
Okay, I'm just. It's, okay.
Can I just chime in a little bit? Does that, does that make anything different than anybody else that would want a similar business, though, the no pickup thing?
I think that's up to us on case.
I think it's, it's up to us and the reason that I like it is because of the size of the, if they come in and said we're gonna have a bunch of cars coming through every day, I'd be really concerned about this application because of the tightness of the zone.
Gotcha.
And the neighborhood, but in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have to add it to all of them. It doesn't, it doesn't set a precedent if that's what you're getting at.
That's, that's, that's a very good, good question. Correction, it does not set a precedent?
No, it doesn't. And, and as, you know, we always add in because it, it's part of the public hearing and as part of testimony, uh, well, we had the two, the two written public comments that had been entered in. I need to bring us out of the, I need us to go back to the public hearing. I need a vote to put us back to the public hearing so I can enter in the written testimony.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So.
I completely blew it.
So we vote.
Okay.
So.
Should we have to come out of it?
We have to come out of the motion.
We need to make a, a vote to come out of the motion, go back into public testimony?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I can make a motion to suspend the motion? Is that it?
Or rescind it.
Or we, I, I'd like to make a motion to rescind my motion.
You rescind your motion and then I need a.
Second.
Bobby, are you seconding your rescind? Okay, whoever.
But I'll.
Okay, so we vote on that?
So it's rescinded, so there's no vote.
Oh, there's no vote. Okay.
So and now I need a motion to reopen the public hearing. I apologize.
That's okay. Sandy, writing fast. Uh, I'd like a motion, make a motion to reopen the public hearing concerning uh, Nagarpa, Nag, I'm sorry. I'm messing up your name. I apologize. Nagarprasanna Naharan, Nahgaraja, Eight Circle Drive. Uh, the hearing about his uh, application for a special permit for home business use commercial kitchen. Reopen. To reopen the public hearing.
Second.
And I do need a vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, okay. So these were distributed, these were shared with the applicant, applicant and they were posted on the website. We received two written correspondence. Um, both in opposition. This first that is up on the screen is from a Mr. David Neal at six, he's at Six Circle Drive um, in opposition to the application. And this uh, itemizes his opposition with respect to traffic, fumes, children in the neighborhood, et cetera. Um, and then the second letter of opposition was from Ken Lipsches at Four Circle Drive in opposition and noted opposition with respect to uh, traffic and parking and air pollution and property values. And they are itemized in Mr. Lipschitz's email to me. Uh, again, all documents are uh, on the website and all documents were shared with the commission and the applicant prior to the meeting this evening. Those were the only two pieces of, of written comment that I received. I apologize Commissioners for uh.
No, I follow.
I should have done it prior to um.
I wrote them today. They.
Yep. So.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay. So now, that was, it was just.
I'm not gonna close. I was just gonna ask you, sir, do you have another comment or question? You have to go back up to the podium, please.
Have to come to.
You have to go up to the podium, please.
James Libby seventy-three Lake Garda Drive. Would any one of you like this five feet away from your house? This exhaust fan with grease and all that stuff? We're all muted, sir?
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You guys are beautiful. Now, what are they gonna do with the grease? I know there's a grease trap, but they gotta have some kind of contraption out in the back that holds this up and have a truck come out and do it, suck it out.
This is the health department's role in this.
Well, okay. Well, I don't know that. Thank you.
I'm just trying to explain it.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing again. Shannon, we're okay with that?
Part, part two, yes.
Yes, part two of close the public hearing. All right, public hearing is closed at eight thirty-four this time. Thanks for that process, everybody. So we need a new. I guess you get to.
New, I get to restart.
Do the motion with the.
With my conditions. Okay.
And we'll go from there.
I would like to make a motion to approve the application by Nagarprasanna Nagaranjan of Eight Circle Drive for a special permit for a home business use commercial kitchen in an R nine LG zone with the following conditions. That it be restricted to no onsite pickup and that all residential noise ordinances are adhered to.
Second, second. Any more discussion? Everybody comfortable voting? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
All right, planners report.
Is that what this country is coming through? Somebody asked a question and you just go get the bag?
Yes, sir. Planners report. Um, you're welcome to, to stay, but you voted, it's been approved and I can follow up with you um, in the next day or so. Okay? All right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you and good luck.
Yes.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, planners report. There's a few, few things that were on the agenda review and I have a few additional uh, small items to add in. So the first one had to do with the two twenty-two Talcat Nach road, the two lot subdivision. We received the final documents and uh, the chairman signed the Mylar uh, We received the final documents and, uh, the chairman signed the Mylar, uh, prior, just prior to the meeting. Uh, staff had reviewed it. It complied with all the approvals. Uh, again, this was just the two lot subdivision for two twenty-two Talcat Nacho. So, so that will be recorded and they will be proceeding with that. The next item up is Homewood Suites, Two Farm Glen Drive. They are basically rebranding and refreshing their signs. So these had been shared on the website and would have been helpful if I rotated those prior to posting here, but you get the gist.
We like it. We like it fresh perspective.
So, uh, existing sign is on top. Uh, the proposed sign is below the areas. So there are four signs. There's, these two A and B are up on the peaks of the roof. D is a small sign near the entrance and C is the monument sign out on the street. So these are the two signs. This is the new sign that'll be up on the peak of the roof. It has overhead lights. Uh, this is what it looks like in the daytime. This is what it will look like now with the overhead light bar. Um, the size is all basically the same size. Again, Homewood Suites and then this new, uh, Homewood Suites. So, and then the, that's the monument sign. The monument sign has exterior lighting. So there's ground mounted lights for the, uh, monument sign. And then the building sign, uh, again, it's right up near the entrance door on the, uh, brick facade portion of the building. So if the, uh, commission has no objection, then I was gonna move this directly to building permit. No need for a more formal review with the commission. It's like for like in each of the four instances. All good.
Okay.
All good.
Makes lots of sense.
Okay, beautiful. Moving right along. The next one is Sub Edge Farm. And Sub Edge Farm, I'm assuming everyone knows where it is. Uh, it's up on, uh, one ninety-nine Town Farm Road. Uh, up, uh, past the polo grounds. Almost, actually half the farm is in Avon, probably more than half the farm. The building, uh, is in Farmington. There's peculiar, there's here. I just had to keep going east. Uh, Town Farm Road. So Sub Edge Farm, so if you've had the pleasure of being there, then here's the, the farm shop and, uh, some of the barns with some of the animals. And then all of these lovely fields as far as the eye can see are all farmed by Sub Edge Farm. Like I said, a majority of them are in Avon. So the, um, the owners have, uh, in years past on some farm to table dinners, a handful of them. This year they're looking to do something that perhaps is a little more family friendly. They're looking for doing, um, farm, weekly farm pizza nights. Uh, it will absolutely need a, um, permit with Farmington Valley Health. Uh, but they are looking for a liquor permit to go with these events. And they will pull a specific event permit for each Saturday. But they're looking to do, uh, family pizza nights on Saturdays from four to eight, uh, assuming the weather is cooperating. There will be, um, no tents. They're gonna have picnic tables out. There will be no live, there'll be no audio from a entertainment and music standpoint. Um, and really at this point, it's just the, the sign off that I need to do for the liquor permit. The liquor permit, interestingly, um, of course, we're limited to what the state offers. So it's a blanket six month permit, um, that would have to be renewed each year or applied for each year. Interesting. They don't really call it a renewal, but it's a separate permit that has to be reapplied for each year. Uh, this is different than a temporary, I, I sign temporary liquor permits all the time at the polo grounds and hillsteads and at the golf tournaments. Um, and even different than a festival permit, which is specific to a four day event or no more than a four day event. So, um, but it's not permanent like a restaurant.
Yeah.
I got, I got a whole rundown on this. Um. So this is, um, you know, they're looking to utilize this, this area. So it's just north of the, the farm shop, the how, the home, uh, is just here off to the, it would be just to the right edge of the page. And so that's, it's really, it's the allowance of these events without, I don't think it warrants a public hearing. Uh, and just permitting me to sign off then on the liquor permit. Obviously, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
The, the only thing I, I, I think of with that isn't, doesn't the polo grounds have their polo matches on Saturday night too? Would we maybe need somebody directing traffic if they're getting a lot of people?
I don't, I don't think there's going to be, and I think for Sub Edge Farm, you're gonna get a handful of fam, I think in, in order to again, make this, um, a little more attractive and make the farm accessible, they're changing it from the farm to table dinner, which was a more formal, um, dinner.
Dinner.
To a more casual.
Not gonna be that big then.
No, I really don't think so. Um.
And it'll be spread out across the evening, the, the hours of operation.
Because, yeah, probably most families aren't, won't be there the full four hours. Whereas for the polo grounds, you typically arrive, stay for the entire event and then leave. This will be more.
Are they, um, are they serving the alcohol themselves or are they bringing them with those liquor trucks in?
Um, I believe the intent on the permit, and I'd had read everything I had gotten on, uh, the consumer protection. I believe this is procured and sold themselves and he is then responsible for doing the identification. I believe if you have a truck come in, then you don't need this permit because the contractor then holds the permit, not the event, with the location. Yeah, it's really, there's a lot of layers to it.
That's a good way to put it.
Yeah, I got quite the education.
Yeah, I think it's cans of beer.
Oh, right, exactly.
Going to the liquor store, getting a couple of twelve packs and.
Correct, correct. And maybe a couple of bottles of wine, something, but that's great.
Cheese pizza in the oil light.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, okay, everybody's, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm clear to sign off?
Please.
Okay, that one's okay. Uh, next one up. Connecticut Air, one seventy-five Scott Swamp Road is moving their building sign from building one to building two because they are no longer being located in building one. So the monument sign will stay out front. So this is on Scott Swamp Road on Route six, basically right across from Jilly Bean's farm stand. Um, so Connecticut Air now is, uh, will only be located in the rear building. They're vacating this front building and we've, but this will, this will come back for us for, um, discussions. I've already had some informal conversations with the owners. Um, but Connecticut Air will be moving to the back building. And as such, their sign needs to go with them. So currently their sign is at the end of their building and they're looking to move it onto the building wall, the front base of the building wall of this second building, uh, up on the third floor. I view street view. I don't even know if anybody, it's gonna be hard pressed to see it, maybe when the leaves are off. But it's the exact same sign in moving it. And they've got the, they said they've got the electrical in that wall they'll punch through and mount it on the wall. So if we're all good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, makes sense.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's the last one for show and tell. Uh, the next, the next one is, uh, to inform you that we received an appeal on the subdivision of thirty-four West District. So they appealed, uh, just the, just the town. Um, uh, they did not list the applicant as another party. And, um, they appealed both a special permit and the subdivision. So it has been sent to the town attorney. He's reviewing it. Uh, we've received it just at the end of last week. Um, the next item is, uh, a response. The town has to have a response in by, I think it's the second full week of, uh, April. So, uh, we'll keep you posted. There's really not, at, at this point, there's really not much for the commission to do. Um, depending upon how far this goes, I start to have some great fun. Uh, putting the, um, the record together, uh, compared to some of the other ones we've had. This is, um, relatively straightforward comparatively, but.
I don't, those that are appealing, I don't think we're at the hearing.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
They were here?
Yes, uh, so it's public record because it's filed in the clerk's office. Doris, Doris.
I saw an article in the.
No, Doris Fillian appealed the decision and she's the immediate butter to the left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the one that wanted the, uh, the yard drains?
Yes. Yep. So, um, I'll keep you appraised, but like I said, there's really, there's, there's not much really for the commission, but I felt you should be informed since you're, the commission is named, uh, as the, uh, for the appeal. So, uh, and then the final thing I have is just to do a double check on a head count for attendance for April eighth. Just again, school break and we will have a busy night, one of the items. So we originally had, I think, four hearings scheduled for April eighth. One of them, we've, uh, sorry, four hearings for March twenty-fifth. One of them I've already pushed to April eighth. So we'll have three on the twenty-fifth. And I've got, uh, four set for April eighth now at this point. So we've got a full, full couple of meetings coming.
As, as long as I'm out by Tuesday morning to get on a flight, a flight to Savannah, we're okay.
Oh, oh, yeah.
How early?
Yeah, right.
Not that early. Don't worry.
No, and I don't think, it's, it's nothing that overly complex.
Okay.
Controversial and well.
Yeah, sure, 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 sure.
So, um, so anyhow, that was the, uh, that was the last planners report item that I had for you folks.
I have a question while you had that, the, the sign or excuse me, the map up or the picture of Connecticut Air.
Yeah.
What's going on with the salt shed that came down, the state salt shed is?
So that's one of the public hearings that's.
Oh, hey. Oh, that is, I, I didn't notice.
You accepted it tonight.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't connect the.
Recognize the.
I didn't connect the address. Okay.
And the one seventy-two is the address for Jilly Beans because some of the work they're doing will be on her property with taking the embankment down between the two properties.
Ah, okay. Um, and my other question is, I was doing a little house cleaning this weekend, my husband was. He came across all the paperwork from the Five Corners Gas Station project.
Yes.
Can I recycle that yet or not yet?
Uh, uh, you can because if it comes back, it will be different.
Okay.
Uh, it'll be different in a much smaller version of that original application. Uh, the attorneys, their attorney and our attorney had bounced back and forth on a couple of things with respect to the validity of the, uh, restrictions on, on the property. Uh, the portion that's in the VR zone and found it, they are valid. Um, and so they had to greatly reduce and use just the portion of the property that's in the B one zone.
Okay.
So we have seen a variety of iterations of it, uh, and at this point, no formal application.
Okay.
Husband made.
Did that go into blight? Did it end up going into blight?
It was added to the blight, the, the town council voted to agree to add it to the blight list, uh, earlier this year. And then, uh, our, we've met with the town manager subsequent to that. And our staff has then issued a follow-up letter accordingly. Yes.
And just based on your other question, I think am I the only one absent on the eighth?
Uh, I, I think so. Well, and I.
You were absent. Are you out here on the eighth?
No, I'm here.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought I.
No, and my understanding is that, um, we should, the, the vacancy should be filled by the time we, we get to there. So that's my understanding at this point. So, okay.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
So we have, uh, at the first prog meeting of the year on the one first.
Okay.
Is there an agenda or is there something I need to bring, like such as joining?
You should, my guess is you should receive an agenda with a call in information. So similar to ours, you should get an agenda and a package. Um, I can make a note, I'll mail Jacob and find out what you should expect to receive and when.
Okay. Can you copy me on that? So, thank you. Just nothing.
Crickets.
Ten days away.
There's an alternate. Am I supposed to attend that also?
If you want.
Yeah.
I have a map, right?
Can we go to the first one? No, you're in Florida or whatever.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for Shannon? All right, can we approve the minutes from February twenty-sixth?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four minutes as presented.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?